All right, let's go ahead and we'll call the work session to order. As everybody knows, we're here to talk about agricultural tourism district and then the other and several miscellaneous items that come up. Joe, this is kind of your baby, so if you want to go ahead and lead us into it and give us a background first and...
Okay, here's where we were on this thing. About three years ago, we looked at doing, trying to figure out a way to have lodging at wineries, okay? And so with that idea in mind, we wanted to do an AT district, agriculture tourism district. And you guys are all familiar with how we did this. We tried to, if you're going to go to that zoning, then you're going to be required to have to be confirmed to other restrictions such as only 7% of your property can be developed, you have to do agriculture, or you have to have an architectural standard. So there are certain things that you would have to stick to, to get that AT zoning. The winery zoning was pretty much the same. I mean, that's the way it was. The intention of it was is everything to stay the same. So that ordinance has been in place for three years. What the problem is recently, or in the last year or so, there's been a couple of wineries that's been trying to get to the AT zoning to do lodging and do some other things, maybe a restaurant or some other, just have a little bit more flexibility, but then they would have to confirm, they would have to do the others, they would have to stick to the regulations of the AT district. And some of these things were prohibitive, like having a building, like if you have a storage unit or something that was too close to the road, the way it was written, you'd have to tear it down and remove it or something. There were just little obstacles that were in the way that wasn't allowing it to work. So Mr. Hazelwood had come to me and said this, and we're trying to work this through. Here's some things we want to look at on some of these changes. So the changes were presented in this format here, and at the same time, staff was looking at some of the other ideas, some of the other items on here, and we were just trying to figure this thing out. It was pretty complicated, actually. And so the question came up about the grapes, and that's been a question going back and forth for quite some time now. And so the question is, is, okay, it says in there that 75% of grapes have to come from St. Charles County or Missouri?
St. Charles County.
St. Charles County.
St. Charles County. And some of the wineries are saying that that makes it very difficult if, how can, if there's only so many grapes in St. Charles County, then how can they make wine? If, you know, you could grow more vineyards, I suppose, some, most of them have vineyards, but, so we're trying to figure out how to make this work. And I understand Tony and some of the other folks' perspective, that's why we invited them in. We said, "Let's have this conversation and see what, how this has to go." The staff had, and you guys would be more willing to chime in when you want, but we, in the past, we've had problems trying to figure out this whole 75% thing. I mean, first of all, some of the wineries are South 94, so are they not allowed to grow grapes in Warren County if they're close to it? And technically, by our law, they couldn't do that. So, and then why can't you buy grapes outside of St. Charles County if it's Missouri? I mean, there's a lot of questions here. So then the other question is, is the guys that have the biggest vineyards, are they monopolizing on the wine industry? So all these questions were arise. Staff was asking me, I'm like, "I have no idea. I don't know, I don't know why we have that, I don't know the reasons behind it and all this other stuff." So the staff put in, the 75% thing came, we had the conversation, we added it into this, to this ordinance here. So I think we have two issues here. I think we have two issues here. The one thing is trying to do the AT district and conform with some of the setbacks and if there's a architectural review that you're not satisfied, you have a right to appeal, you know, things like that. I was under the impression, the AT, those portions of it aren't too complicated. I could be wrong, but that's how I saw it. Now, I think the grape thing is the issue. That's what I think. But I, you know, we'll let, we'll hear it from both sides. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Wayne was nice enough to put together kind of an outline of the issues as he saw them, and Robert undoubtedly had a hand in this as well. They laid it out as issue number one, definition of a winery and the 75% of the grapes coming from St. Charles County. Let's, just for sake of moving the discussion forward in a cohesive manner, let's talk about just that issue first. Who wants to, I mean, you have a, want to jump in and be the first to start?
Definition of a winery?
Of the 75% rule.
Well, I've been making wine in St. Charles County for 34 years.
I'm sorry, forgive me.
Oh, my name is Tony Kuyumjin.
Okay.
I own Montella and Augusta Wineries.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Okay. So I've been in business making wine for 34 years in St. Charles County. We have had this ordinance for over 30 years. It's worked fine, nobody's had a problem with it. The reason why we have the ordinance is because a number of years ago, when there was only two wineries in St. Charles County, Mount Pleasant and Montell, it was understood what everybody wanted to do. They wanted to make grapes from St. Charles County vineyards, they wanted to produce a product that was unique and that was better than anybody else's. That was everybody's idea. A winery from, I can't even remember where it was, outside of St. Charles County, decided that they were going to come up and they were going to open up a winery where Montell is right now, they called it Osage Ridge, but they weren't going to use St. Charles County grapes. So at that time, Lucian Dressel, who was the owner of Mount Pleasant Winery, said, "I object to this. There's an ordinance already in St. Charles County that says that if you want to open, for instance, a fruit stand on the side of the highway, you have to own the land where that fruit stand is, and you have to be selling fruit from the land that you own." You know, it was, it was there to preserve agriculture and to keep people from just taking their pickup truck and parking alongside the roads and so on, you know, watermelons and stuff like that. So there was a lot of discussion involved in this, and this is what they came up with. I was not part of this, because at the time, my winery was located in the city of St. Charles, so I wasn't in an incorporated St. Charles County. But they felt that there had to be a commitment to agriculture in St. Charles County. They just didn't want people opening up, you know, like a wine bar or something like that. So they said 75% St. Charles County grapes, you have to have a Missouri domestic winery license, which means that you have to use 85% Missouri grapes. And later on, the part about that you can't sell more than twice the amount of wine that you make on the premises came about.
Okay. Is there somebody here that would like to talk, goes to kind of a background or a different perspective from the, somebody that thinks that 75% is too restrictive?
When we opened our business in 2008, we planted in seven. And with any business, you know, you had the curb of growing, especially in the vineyard life. Three years, we started by buying fruit and finished juice from, some from St. Charles County, some from St. Genevieve. We had a lot of West Coast production, and we started the business that way. 2010, we did our first production, and as our vineyard has grown, you know, our production has grown. So currently, we buy, I would say about 3,000 cases worth of Missouri grapes produced in Missouri wine, and we're now at the process now, where we're probably on that 75%. We only buy, we buy some Norton from outside of county, some grapes, but everything else comes within the county. You know, it's, when we started, the growing curb hit, and we're still doing the West Coast thing, but our current sales actually with our own production is, we're selling more Missouri wine than we are West Coast wine. And I don't think that's what we're talking about, but then what we're making at our site, though, is more or less confirming with this. But it was a step up to do.
Okay, so the issue really wasn't, could you do that?
It was a timeframe.
Could you get the AT zoning?
AT zoning, because we have an old home on the property that was built in 1887, and eventually we want to turn it to a restaurant, and, or we'll lose it. And it's got a lot of history to it, and we eventually would like to do that.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate your comments. And you want to, does also, why you think the 75% rule is...
My name's Dale Rawlings. I'm the owner of the Yellow Farmhouse Winery in Defiance. We're a small potatoes winery. We make about 12,000 bottles, or about 1,000 cases of wine a year. As wineries go, that might sound like a lot, but it's not. Many of the wineries, or most of the wineries here are larger than they are, there may be a couple smaller. But we asked the question early in the game, what's the point of the 75% rule? Is St. Charles County producing better grapes than somebody in Warren County or Lincoln County or somewhere? No difference in the quality of grapes. Missouri has a requirement that we use 85% Missouri grapes if we're going to call it Missouri wine. And I think that's a legitimate, I think that's a legitimate labeling process. We don't necessarily call our wine St. Charles County wine, so you're not connecting it up with any kind of an Appalachian style labeling. Now, there is an Appalachian, an AVA, in St. Charles County. It's a great Appalachian, it's down at Augusta. And if they want to have a rule like that, I think it's a very appropriate thing for them to do. My winery, for example, doesn't set in that Appalachian. So saying to me, "I got to have 75% Missouri grapes," my first reaction, or 75% St. Charles grapes, I'm sorry, my first reaction is to say, "Why? What's the purpose of making that requirement? Is it, it's almost anti-competitive?" And when you think about it, we don't make that, we, the example was given, for example, of a fruit stand, we understand that. And there may be some legitimate reasons to require St. Charles County products, but you don't require a lumber company to use St. Charles County lumber. You don't require a bar to use Missouri or St. Charles County liquor. So the end result is that you're setting the standard for wineries that doesn't exist anywhere, anywhere else. To my knowledge, no other county in the state of Missouri has this requirement. There are lots of wineries in the state now, there's about 125, 130 wineries in Missouri. Nobody else has this requirement, and for a couple of very simple reasons beyond the one that it's hard to justify why we do it. One reason is, it's almost impossible to enforce. Now, we don't have much complaint, we don't hear much about it, since it's been in the ordinance book for a long time, but we're not, there's, St. Charles County has no inspection mechanism, we have no wine and grape control board or body that is charged with enforcing the rule. So the end result is, we're engrafting a rule on winemakers that just, it's almost impossible to enforce because there's no mechanism to enforce the thing. So finally, the 75% rule seems to have only one function. And Tony's right, I think the way this came up, somebody decided to put a winery in here and bring grapes in here and sell them. Well, the truth is, when you ask the question, is that, should that really be an illegal act? It's pretty tough to justify it on a competitive basis. Several wineries, in fact, I would guess that almost all ones, not all, need to buy grapes. We don't have, most of us, the capability to produce enough grapes to make wine. Our little winery uses about 16 or 17 tons of grapes each year. We buy grapes from other places in Missouri, we comply with the 85% rule, we don't have any problems with that, but we certainly don't get all of our grapes from St. Charles County. Now, it also inhibits the growth of the wine industry. We'll give you an example. There are two relatively new wines in this area. One is called Adalice, and the other is called Aramello. The brand new wines, they've just been essentially hybridized, one by the University of Minnesota, one by Cornell University. Nobody in St. Charles County is growing those wines. Nobody. So you can't buy those wines and make wine out of them in Missouri, in St. Charles County. Now, if I want to buy Aramello, let's say, then that means I have to back off on some other wine that I might normally be making, that's a very good, maybe a good wine, maybe like a Norton or a Shanderson or some of the other wines that are locally grown. You see where the thing is a push-pull, but it doesn't, when you begin to look at the foundation for it, I have a tough time answering the gut question, what's the purpose of requiring 75%? And I just don't think it's there. But I think I would support this part of the ordinance that says, or that removes the 75% requirement. I don't think we need it, I think we can do without it.
Thank you, Mr. Rawlings, appreciate that.
Do you have any questions?
No, go ahead, we're going to have an easy...
Not well, not well. It is enforced through the regular inspection process. The trouble is that Missouri wine and grape and the state alcohol control board has been so limited in funds, they've had almost no ability to enforce a lot of these things.
Can I try to ask you?
Go ahead.
We're regulated by the Treasury Department, more exactly the TTB, Trade and Tax Bureau. They require us to keep extremely accurate records of every single pound of grapes that we bring in and convert into wine. All those records are available at the winery, they have to be available at the winery. If the TTB wants to come in and do an inspection, they often do, they want to be able to have the winery prove that what they have on their label is what is in the bottle. So all those records are available, they're, you know, and they're available to any inspector who wants to come in and do it. The state does the same thing. I've been inspected by the state a number of times, and they want to make sure that I'm using 85% Missouri grapes. So they go back and they take a look at all my invoices, and they see where the grapegrowers are from.
All right. Council members, do we have questions, do we, comments, concerns, what's the...
So I'm confused. Tony's for the 75%, I don't know whether Chuck is for it or against it. You're for it?
He's against it.
You're against it? And of course Dale's against it, so...
We have people on both sides that have good arguments on both sides.
And there's more people that are opposed to it, too, in the audience. You know, when, and I think this, here's the main point, as far as I'm concerned, is authenticity, okay? So we want this to be one of the greatest wine areas in the United States. We want people to come from all over the United States and to come to St. Charles County and visit the wineries and taste the wines, and be able to taste the difference between grapes that are grown in St. Charles County and grapes that are grown in California or New York or whatever. Also, in St. Charles County is the Augusta AVA, which was the first official Appalachian of origin in the United States, 1980. Napa Valley was chosen as the second runner-up, and that was 18 months later. So there was, there's a reason why they chose Augusta as the first AVAs, because we have some really unique soils here, we have unique climates, we have microclimates, we have history, we have all that stuff. So to invite people to come over and visit this wine area, and you know, wine tourism now is getting to be a big thing, but to have them come over, and the first two or three wineries they visit, they experience wines from California, or they experience wines from Italy, or...
But even there, 85% of their wines, if I understood correctly, 85% of it would still be from the state of Missouri, if not from St. Charles County itself.
85% of the grapes.
Oh, the grapes.
Not necessarily the wine, right?
They're only called Missouri wines. They're called Missouri wines. But see, that was, that's being dropped here in this ordinance. They're also dropping the 85% Missouri grape rule.
But that's a, that's a state rule, correct?
It's a, it's a state rule, but there's loopholes.
So Tony, is it, I mean, I guess there's kind of a variety of issues here. Is it the Missouri grape, or is it strictly the St. Charles, I mean, but if we went to a, I mean, like... Rick, you guys got, you got property in Warren County? No? Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, it's just, you know, we're just, I don't know, I don't... Trying to figure out, like Dale was asking, what is, what is the, like, the benefit if some of the wineries aren't in the Appalachian portion of the St. Charles County, then how, how does it relate to everyone in St. Charles County in that 94 quarter? And so, I mean, is there, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, is there...
What is reasonable and what is not reasonable? I understand your perspective, because you said, "Well, this is, was the rule, and you guys played by the rules, and then they're changing the rules." I get that, too.
Right.
And there, Joe, there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of grape growers in the audience here that have invested $15,000 an acre to put in grapes, and they did that because, you know, the local wineries were required to buy 75% of their grapes from the local vineyards. So, you know, they're doing what the county wanted them to do, and that's to preserve agriculture in this section of St. Charles County, you know, which they call the Historic Wine District. So that's always, as long as I've been in this county, that's the way it's always been, that we wanted to preserve that part of the county for agriculture, excuse me, and, I thought it turned it off.
Those aren't church bells, are they, Tony?
Yeah. So I wanted to preserve, you know, I mean, to preserve that part of the county for, you know, a bucolic drive on a Sunday afternoon or whatever, you know? But that's exactly what's happening. You know, in other words, one of the things that the state advocates is that we get involved in specialty crops, that we get involved in crops that become worth more because the farmer actually processes them. So, you know, in the case of grapes, you turn around processing them into wine, and wine is a product that's worth more than the grapes themselves, and it's an agricultural product. And, you know, the land that we're planting these grapes on is land that's not suitable for root crops, you know? It's steep, we have highly erodible soils in St. Charles County, we have membro silt loam, which is a great soil to grow grapes in, but it's not a very good soil to grow root crops in because it's erodible, you know? So, you know, I, you know, for me, it's about...
Okay.
Augusta area, and it's about St. Charles County, but it's also about authenticity. I don't want to open up the door so there's no restrictions at all about, you know, Missouri grapes or St. Charles County grapes, and have people sell them whatever they want.
Thanks, Tony. We're going to try to get comments from everyone. Robert, what do you think?
Well, definition of winery, as part of reviewing and providing feedback for how their ordinance may work better, generally speaking, we saw some advantages for amending the definition of winery. And actually, part of that, the benefit, was just simplifying the definition. So for instance, a winery wouldn't necessarily have to have wine tasting and tours, things like that, it could or it wouldn't have to. The way it's written now, it assumes that all wineries basically have tours, and they have wine tastings and have these ancillary uses, but we thought it would be some advantage to having more flexible. As part of that, we also reviewed the current requirement for 75% grapes specifically from St. Charles County and grown on five acres or more in size. So it's not just grapes from St. Charles County, but it's got to be from areas that are five acres or more in size. And we basically tried to weigh the advantages and disadvantages for that, and what we ended up recommending was changing that so that it no longer would require the 75% rule for a couple of reasons. One is provide more flexibility. We were hearing from the two wineries that we spoke with that they would appreciate more flexibility in terms of where the grapes would come from, say if you have a bad year, for instance, for a grape production, if you're just getting started, I'm hearing tonight, and some other factors like that. Also, ultimately, it does limit the maximum amount of wine that can be produced in any one area. When this started out, maybe there was two wineries, but now I think there's around nine. So at some point, you're going to hit a ceiling, I think, for how much wine can be produced in an area. Also, it's right on the border with another county, so would there really be, I don't know if people market themselves as St. Charles County wine so much as Missouri wine, but that's at least the term that I see most of the time. When you go into stores, for instance, you see Missouri wine. So those were some of the ideas that we're going through ahead.
Okay, so again, from the staff's position, your recommendation is that we...
We're not really recommending, what we're saying is that this is not so much a zoning question as it is maybe how you want to have this area developed from an economic standpoint. Do you want to have this area marketed specifically for St. Charles County grapes, or do you want it broader than that?
Okay.
And so it's really maybe a six of one and half a dozen of another issue as far as we're concerned from staff's standpoint.
Okay. Joe, you're...
Well, how do you, if it were in place, I mean, we've had some issues, and you guys will get called, you go out and inspect, how do we enforce it?
Well, unfortunately, the little grapes don't have, I was growing in St. Charles County.
Can we get those stamped?
Yeah, they won't allow us to get them stamped on anything. But seriously, it could be done, just like everybody has records that they're have to maintain, and so there would be a way to get our hands on those and do an audit. Would it be easy? No.
Joe, you're the sponsor.
Well, no, I was just, these were part of the things that were reviewed, and Robert, he put that in, he didn't know. I don't know why, I told Tony, I said, "I can't understand it." He gave me a little bit of the history, I understand his perspective. I mean, there's both sides to the story, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if there's common ground, I don't know if there's not common ground, I don't know. I would like to see there'd be common ground, but, what, Mike?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Michael, I'm a grape grower from Augusta area. I guess I've got three things. One is, I appreciate what everybody is saying, a couple things. One is, when I got into the grape growing business, sort of by chance, but I've been doing a lot of research, do we want, do we want this area to just be an entertainment area where just anything could happen? That's, that should be your first question. Second question should be, could it be an area like, you know, the difference between American wine, Missouri wine, and Augusta wine are huge, okay? Let me give you an example. If you're in, you can drink French wine all day long, but if you drink French wine from Bordeaux, you know, it's only going to come from Bordeaux, and everybody talks about it because it is a brand. So the idea is, if, for the city of St. Charles, they should consider this as a brand. The other thing about in regard to grape producers or different varietals, I think from a grape grower perspective, if we worked closer with the, with the wineries, you know, we'd be more than happy to expand, expand our production into other, other types of grapes, if those are available, and I think maybe that's something that we could work on together. So I think those are the kind of things. But I really think that, for the purposes of what we're thinking about here, if we, if we stay with what, you know, the guidelines within an AVA and we create a brand around it, I think the brand around us, because, you know, when people talk about wine, if you just talk about, "Oh, that wine's from Missouri." Well, you know, we could have great wine in Augusta, terrible wine in Columbia, Missouri, and terrible wine, you know, in southwest Missouri, but Augusta could be great. So we don't want to get a reputation, we want to get a reputation of what we do and what we do well. That's, that's kind of my take on the whole thing.
My name is Joe Sattler, also a grape grower in St. Charles County. He travels all the AVA areas, and I got to tell you, I don't know what the Californians would give up to own the first AVA in America, but I'm one. And we go there, it is amazing to have them respond to us and bring Missouri wine and St. Charles wine to them and to introduce them. And like Mike said... And like Mike said, this is a brand that this county owns, it's so unique. I mean, people, we go to Washington State, people basically say, thank God we're in California. They are thrilled with that, that this group has a unique brand and a unique, uh, situation. And I have to agree with Tony, you are consistently, maybe came in our winery and our growing conditions here, and it's seventy percent instead of seventy-five. I don't know if it's a real number or not. But the point is, we lose that, and we allow anybody to sell, a winery to sell anything they want, and people get confused, they don't never know the difference. And we're going to lose what this county and state have that no one can replace. And I said, this is probably one of the roots down to this county. And it's going to take a lot of work to grow it, and that's the kind of order you have here, defending this regulation ordinance, because that's what we want to grow in this county. And maybe enjoy production.
Mike, go ahead.
Okay, so, I guess the thing that I'm kind of wondering about here is, it sounds like partly a marketing question as to what we're talking about. And sorry for simplifying it, it's what I do. So, that's kind of where I'm coming back from. Why can't you do different types of marketing to set yourself apart? I mean, if the wine is that good, I would want to jump up and down all day and say, this is my wine, it is true St. Charles County wine with these particular grapes, and I would want to market that and make sure that I can set it apart, for lack of a better term, and then say, it's not Missouri wine. Because I, Tony, I don't see the eighty-five percent requirement out of here. I don't see that out of this bill, at least not the one that I'm currently looking at. And I think the Missouri eighty-five percent's got to stand no matter what, even though whatever we would say, I think the Missouri part has to stand, but we can ask the attorneys about that. Keith's going to know better than I would as to whether or not that's true. Is that true, Keith?
No, I have no idea. But here's what, here's what I'm getting. There's an Appalachian that is worthy of preserving. It sounds like that's Augusta. It doesn't sound as though that's St. Charles County.
Right.
Then, it sounds like there are these other circumstances where you can't put Missouri on your label because the state mandates that you've got to have eighty-five percent Missouri grapes at that point. I'm, the only, the only dog I have in this fight is I worry a little bit about Chandler, which I think has worked its way just through the sheer passage of time off of the difficulty that that was creating. So, I don't, I don't know if we have the same set of concerns as we would have, say, a year ago or whatever.
You're saying that Chandler has grown, and now they're using seventy-five percent?
But, I got to say to you, I'm a little like, it sounds to me like the comment, maybe the wine growers and the wine producers ought to carry on a conversation about, is there any real value to the St. Charles County Appalachian? I'm not hearing that there is. It certainly hasn't been approved by any federal agency, is best I'm hearing tonight.
Right.
And so forth. So, why would we, why would we mix into our zoning laws an issue that's sort of a marketing one, the very thing you're talking about?
Right.
And I think that's what Dale was saying. There's something almost, you're getting borderline anti-competitive when you try to protect something that is maybe not as protected as the Appalachian language for Augusta would be or the Missouri language would be for the state of Missouri.
Tony, is your main concern that we're going to, we're going to hurt the Appalachian by taking out the seventy-five percent?
That's, that's part of it. The other part is the no Missouri grape requirement. Now, that, in the, when you take a look at what's crossed out here on, under Winery Section 105.060, the second sentence says, "All wines offered for sale at the winery must be produced under a state of Missouri domestic license." So, to produce wine under a state of Missouri domestic license, it has to be eighty-five percent Missouri grapes, okay? This was crossed out, and it wasn't added back in again. So, I guess I have two concerns. One of them is St. Charles County grape. Admittedly, that was just a number that was pulled out of a hat, you know. I mean, is it magical? No. Could it be seventy percent? I don't see why not. It could be sixty-five percent. You know, Napa Valley has an ordinance that makes it eighty-five percent. Eighty-five percent of the wine that's produced at a winery in Napa Valley has to come from Napa Valley grapes. Are we Napa Valley? No, we're much better. So, you know, I guess I'm negotiable on that from my standpoint. I can't speak for everybody.
On the Missouri law, Wayne or Robert, where it says where that's crossed out, you cross that out because it's already under the jurisdiction of state law? Or, I mean, that could be added in, too, if it's already state law. It doesn't really matter, right? Or Ali, do you know?
I understand that, I mean, the wine that's offered for sale under the state of Missouri domestic license means that it must require eighty-five percent of the very grapes. So, my understanding was that, as of now, you're limited to the only wine that has eighty-five percent of the very grapes. And you're trying to limit the rest of the country, so any wine that doesn't...
So, I mean, it could be anywhere in this, but it's already a state law.
Well, yeah, true. But now, there's, you know, whenever there's an ordinance, there's also a loophole, right? So, there's this loophole that has come around that if you get a retail liquor license, then you don't, then you can get around that rule because you become a, you know, like a restaurant or a liquor shop or something like that, rather than a winery, you know. If, I would feel a whole lot better if we were enforcing eighty-five percent Missouri grapes.
And just put it back in.
I don't, I don't see why. That'd be a problem, but I mean, Keith, I don't know.
It's not a problem.
No, I don't think that's an issue at all. I didn't do that. I don't know. I mean, we can, I think it was because it was already a state law, and I think that they asked me about it and said it's a state law. I don't know. I mean, you know, but I don't know why.
Well, I understand it, but we're hearing people say, if you want to call it a Missouri wine, it has to have eighty-five percent grapes.
Right.
If you don't call it a Missouri wine, it doesn't have to have eighty-five percent Missouri grapes in.
I think, I don't think that's an issue. I think some of these things, Tony, maybe we probably need to sit down with the groups and just kind of try to hammer it out and see what's... Because Chandler Hill's doing, you're doing, you're doing all this pretty much anyway. I mean, and so...
But I'm also talking about total production, you know. In other words, eighty-five percent of the goods for sale at that winery should be Missouri grapes to operate as a domestic winery. Now, you can blend in fifteen percent from someplace else, but eighty-five percent of it has to...
But I would talk out, and I think you can control the money, just that all of the wines for sale on this site must be produced the way it's been grown on the country's growing area. So, I mean, talk to people, I guess they can do that.
You're right, it does say all the wine. That is, that part has been struck out.
Well, but some places are selling wines that aren't Missouri wines, correct? I mean, some places offer some wines that aren't, and they're labeled that way correctly? Correct? So, I mean, there's no confusion about that.
Yeah, but I think what we're trying to say is that's what bars, and that's what restaurants, and that's what those people do. They buy wines from other areas, and we can purchase those in county wine. This is a special use permit of agriculture and use of representing the product that comes from our land as a wine. That's what a winery is doing. And so, once we call it a Missouri winery, and I guarantee that wine should come from grapes grown. We could, in the state, I understand the border on the county, you know, broadening that out a little bit too is kind of okay, but at the same time, bringing in lots of California juice or New York juice, doesn't seem to represent and grow Missouri wine in this or in St. Charles County.
No, I'd agree with that. But I guess we were getting back into, what is the definition of a winery? Because I'm never going to confuse Montel and the Cattleville Winery, right? They're both called winery. To the general public, they're both wineries. But those are two completely different things. Can we agree on that? So, I mean, part of it is, I'm a little concerned about how some of this stuff is worded.
I guess it's the AT zoning.
A lot of this sounds like it's an Augusta issue, not necessarily a St. Charles issue, because...
Yeah, but that's a key part.
No, 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 I agree.
And then, outside the ADA, certainly then, just grape is a whole of Augusta's way and growing that wine is in South Fork. I mean, losing any integrity of it puts other pieces of risk in question.
I'd like to see people get on Highway ninety-four at forty, go through the bush wildlife area, and then drive down ninety-four and be able to taste wines that are from this local area and identify with that. Now, if somebody wants to have a bottle shop or a liquor store or a wine shop where they have all kinds of different wines, you know, California wines and French wines and Spanish wines and stuff like that, I think that's also a great venue, but I don't think it belongs in southwest St. Charles County.
At all? Even if they conform to the regular zoning, none of the, not in the AT zoning at all?
Theoretically, they could have fifteen percent of that product, according to the rule. I mean, I just think that we have to understand the definition between a winery and the definition between a restaurant or a bottle shop or a liquor store. And there's a big difference there, you know. And if we want this to be authentic, and if we want people to take our business seriously, and there's a lot of passionate people out here, everybody that owns a winery in St. Charles County and probably the whole state is very passionate about what they do. And it's not just about making money, it's about doing it right, and it's about doing it with local grapes, and it's proving that we can do a better job than other people. And so, I think that, once we say, this is a wine trail, this is a wine area, this is a historic winery area, that we should really do what we're saying. We should be honest to the tourists.
Okay, and I guess it's that level, eighty-five percent or a hundred percent?
Well, eighty-five percent is a state law.
From Missouri, that's just Missouri wine.
I know, but in our area of St. Charles County, are we saying that it's okay to have St. Charles County grown wines and also fifteen percent from California or New Zealand or wherever else you want? Or only, to qualify for the zoning, only St. Charles County wines?
This is, you know, these liquor laws are really confusing, you know. And I guess you can blame it on the Twenty-first Amendment. But what St. Charles County is saying is that it has to be seventy-five percent St. Charles County, okay? And then twenty-five percent can be something else. And the state is saying it's got to be eighty-five percent Missouri, and fifteen percent could be something else. So, if somebody really wanted to operate under these rules, the way they were, you know, the way they exist right now, theoretically, they could bring in twenty-five percent grapes from outside of St. Charles County. They could also bring in fifteen percent from outside of Missouri. So, they have that flexibility. If they really felt strongly about producing a wine from California or from New York or from Michigan, they could do that with fifteen percent of their production.
Okay.
I think there's a lot more conversation than needs to...
Mr. Curran, yes.
I've got a technical question about this, though. The eighty-five percent number you're talking about is the grapes that go into the wine, right?
Yes, sir.
So, it's eighty-five percent Missouri grapes, fifteen percent maybe California grapes. What if, and I know a little bit about wine, I drank a few, some of yours before, what about if you serve, are you allowed to serve Norton that came a hundred percent from your winery, and fifteen percent of your customers might buy a Pinot Grigio that came from Italy? Are you allowed to do that at your winery?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
But the total amount of wine, the balance, has to be, however, you can mix it before you sell it, or you can serve fifteen percent either way. Is that the flexibility you have now?
Exactly. That's the flexibility you have. You can put fifteen percent in, or you can just say, fifteen percent of my production is going to be Italian Pinot Grigio, you know.
Okay, I'm going to do a very informal, not scientific survey. How many people in the room think that we should allow sales from wherever the grapes came from and wherever they were manufactured? Anyplace you can have a restaurant and serve whatever you want in this AT zoning? Okay. How many think that it should be limited to eighty-five percent?
It's going to be a tall question.
Okay, so, there are a few, we're hearing a lot more from the people that are on the AT, that are the, I'll call them the St. Charles County purists.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I just want to ask one final question. For the growers, if this was eliminated, the seventy-five percent, how would it affect your business? Would it hurt your business? Would you have more competition from the outside? Or would you still be able to continue the way you are now?
I think most of us would agree that it would hurt. It would hurt business. Provide services and provide, you know, provide labor and things like that. Unless we can get to our grapes and unless we have the spell, we're still doing it. My comment would be, most of us have additional land that's so big and the right proposal before we're forced to go. So, it's not a lack of land being available in that lot. You put land on the front yard, and so, I mean, it leaves that lot. So, there's plenty of room for production. I think, Rose, the town can look at that and try to...
Mr. Chairman?
Could I suggest that, since this is a very technical issue, that, you know, we have another one of these work sessions with grape growers and winery owners within the, within the unincorporated part of St. Charles County?
Absolutely.
And rather than try to deal with this at this point?
You know, I think, I think the end in mind is trying to get to an AT district where we could expand into some lodging. And I don't know if the grape issue is, I think that's something that we might be able to come closer to working out, just maybe sticking closer to where we are with it. Because a lot of zoning stuff is just about driveways and setbacks and stuff like that, architectural values and stuff. If you've got an existing winery, it doesn't affect any of that. So, if it's the grape issue that we're mostly talking about, I think we might be able to sit down and try to figure that out better and come to some kind of an understanding on that that would work for everybody. That would be my hope, anyway.
I mean, that's my primary objection. I know there's other people that have done breakfast and stuff like that that maybe have objections to...
Unfortunately, we didn't even, we didn't even broach this subject yet. In my naivety, I thought it was going to be relatively easy to define the terms and come up with a solution, but...
It's probably going to be more difficult than the graphic canvas.
Well, everybody's been nice about it, and I suspect we'll need to go sample some of these to get the true flavor of...
I would gladly recommend that.
Yeah. Okay. Joe, I guess you're going to organize another meeting.
Yeah, I just, I can get with some of the, I'll get with both perspectives, and maybe we'll sit down, and if we can do it that way or whatever, or maybe, maybe the way it is, is maybe it's okay, I don't know. We'll tweak it, look at it, whatever. We'll check it out. I mean, I'll try to work some out, and maybe I can't work it out. I mean, there's seven of us, but I'll try, you know.
Well, try to come up with something that is, you know, a proposal, and then we'll, I doubt, we'll hear from both people on both sides.
Yeah, right.
And move it forward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to do anything with respect to the real zoning issues? The seven percent and so...
Yep. Those are the... I think that's the next issue, and I'm just trying, I'm looking at the clock. We've got, we've got about seven minutes. Is that fair time to broach this subject at this point?
We could start on it.
Okay.
Well, in, just to get your minds thinking about it, let me just kind of refresh your memories. Back in November two thousand twelve, the AT zoning district was created by virtue of an amendment to the UDO. The two clients that I represent here, which is Bill Shaw, who's also in the front row, sitting next to Chuck from Wine Country Garden, started to dig into some of the details of that, of the zoning, the new zoning, the AT zoning district. And as he got to digging into it, and as Chuck's business has improved over time, and he has wanted to start expanding, we started scrutinizing the original November two thousand twelve language, and we ran across issues with respect to the designation of the setback requirement... with respect to the, uh, designation of the, uh, setback requirement with the designation of a 7% limitation. And, uh, actually, just within the last 45 days or so, we were trying to deal with the definition of existing structure. So, uh, I don't know that we can do justice in a few minutes with dealing with all of those. I added, I added into the AT district, I added a concern that when, in November of 2012, the conditional use permit language for restaurants in the agricultural district was completely deleted. And that turned anyone who was operating with such a conditional use permit into a non-conforming use. And for, for about 12 months, we were okay with that because we thought we'd be coming in and getting our AT rezoning accomplished. But as time has marched on, I get a little nervous that, that they have, by virtue of taking away that conditional use permit and putting them in the non-conforming use category, it has given them a little less certainty.
Okay.
So, those, that's just some quick background on what the next set of conversations...
Let's do this. Um, we're sitting here now. What's the, what's the date of the first meeting in Jim? Do we have a work session? Do we have a work session planned for that night? All right. It's going to be June 9th. Um, if you would, I'm going to give you this document. This kind of lays out what staff, what's still the, the issues?
I, I got it.
You got one of those? Okay, thank you. Um, if you would, Keith, take this and use it. We're going to, we're going to work real hard on just having issues listed out.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll, we'll have a more structured meeting on just the zoning issues. And Mr. Brazel, you'll have a meeting with, with, with these guys and see if we, if there's a, an overall consensus that can be, that can be, come up with. And if not, at least two different proposals. We'll, we'll hear discussion on both sides and, and make a decision at that point. So, uh, we'll reconvene this part June 9th. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time. Interesting discussions. We're going to reconvene at 7 o'clock for the regular council meeting.